Before we get started, I just want to make a couple of quick announcements. I want to ask you to please place your phones on silent. And if you come up on call to the public, you have three minutes, three minutes to speak. And please state your name and address for the record. With that said, I'd like to call this September seventeenth, twenty twenty five Board of Supervisors meeting to order. And Mr. Montillas, will you lead us in the pledge, sir? Thank you, sir. Next, we move on to item B, adoption of the agenda. Mr. Manager, good morning, sir.
Mr. Chair, good morning, members of the board. Yeah, no changes to the agenda.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda and allow Chair to deviate.
I moved to adopt the agenda as presented and allowed Chair to deviate. And I wanted to ask you, like, if we could move items G before the executive session.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Is that a motion? That's a motion, no? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'll go ahead and, at this time, we'll go ahead and, since you have to leave, let's go ahead and do item G. The study session. Number one, update from the Santa Cruz County Council on Aging on the successful implementation of the Senior Health Promotion Grant awarded by the Health Department. Dr. Barona, good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. We're here to give you a presentation on the money that was awarded to us by the Santa Cruz County Health Department of the State of Arizona. And what we did with that allocation of funds, which has helped us quite a bit. As we would like you and the public to know how we did that. At this time, I would like to introduce to you the members of the board that are with me, Mr. Chairman. We have Dr. Arnoldo Molte, the Vice Chairman of the Board of Directors.
Morning.
Elsa Wiley, who is a member of the board also. Martha Valenzuela, the Secretary of the Board. And Laura Villa, who is the Center Manager. Laura Villa is going to come up and give a presentation of exactly what we did with the funds. And then I'll step back up just to make some concluding remarks, and that'll terminate our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Laura Villa, and I'm a proud member of the Santa Cruz Council on Aging as the Center Manager. I want to thank all of you, our supervisors, our county manager, for the chance to represent the Santa Cruz Council on Aging here today. And how everybody refers to it as the Nogales Senior Center. We want to extend our gratified heartfelt gratitude to the county and in particular to Fernando Silvas, who is in the room today. And his exceptional team, Emmanuel and also Alejandra. Their commitment and professionalism throughout this grant phase has been instrumental to our success. This grant has been a powerful tool, allowing the center to significantly enhance our programs and engage more seniors. We are committed to creating fulfilling experiences for them with impactful changes that truly resonate. In a world that often feels overwhelming, our senior center serves as a crucial sanctuary for older adults. A place where they can reconnect with old friends and make new ones and truly call it a home. At the center, we pride ourselves on providing daily activities that promote healthy, balanced nutrition, physical activity, and tackle issues of loneliness and isolation. We are focused for forging strong partnerships such as yourselves that align with our mutual goals. Thanks to this grant, we have an opportunity to innovate and implement fresh approaches that enrich the lives of our members in meaningful ways. It is essential to acknowledge the tremendous wealth of knowledge that older adults bring to our community. Their life experiences offer invaluable lessons and connections to our past. We encourage you to visit the center and engage with our members, showcasing your appreciation and respect for their contributions. We are excited to share data demonstrating the center continues to flourish even within the many challenges. Your unwavering support for the Santa Cruz Council on Aging assures that we will thrive through changes and uncertainties, securities of our path moving forward. Up front in this PowerPoint, you will see a PowerPoint presentation showing the different activities we were able to accomplish. You'll see that over a thousand two hundred hours, we're committed to this grant with the guidance and support from Fernando Silvas. We are very fortunate to have been able to produce these outcomes for you today. We were able to start fall evidence-based programs such as A Matter of Balance, that we have our two instructors here, Elsa and Martita, who are both volunteers. And also provide and enhance our nutrition program to the Rio Rico Community Center as well by delivering over five hundred and sixty-five meals to the Rio Rico Center. As well as in order to, in a way to prevent, continue to prevent loneliness and isolation, we were able to do a trip to the zoo in Tucson, which over eighty-eight people attended. Two buses were rented for that particular event. It was a little hassle to be able to do it, but we managed, right Fernando? Leveraging our partners, a lot of communication partnerships with our Mariposa Community Center, as well as the Health Department, the Women's Club, who was very engaged in doing Game Day, and as well as the conference that all of our partners during this grant were able to complete. And there was over fifty people from our center that were not transported, but invited to go to that conference in Nogales. So we're really fortunate for that. And our chorus, fitness, zumba, and arts classes continue to happen because of the grant. And also looking forward to a next opportunity to continue utilizing the funds from that grant to moving forward. I appreciate your attention, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, first of all, like, I want to thank you for all the work that you guys do. And like you said, it's a place that people reconnect, right? And that's the place where I go and connect with people. And you said it too, like a place that's called home, right? I always feel welcome. Thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for always opening the doors for me. I was there this week. You had music, poetry. It's just, I was able to take Senator Gavaldón. So thanks again for everything that you guys do.
Thank you for saying that. And, you know, Senator Gavaldón has always been a true supporter of the Older Americans Act. And that's what I asked for you today, is that to keep that in mind. The Older Americans Act has not been yet approved by the federal government. It is still pending. So as you're having those meetings and connections, please keep it in mind. In order for us to have the seniors' centers open amongst all other services that we provide, the area agency on aging provides, it's important that the Older Americans Act gets reauthorized. Thank you.
Thank you so much for an incredible presentation. I have three things. First of all, please reach out to me during one of your upcoming events. I'd love to go, especially as I'm aging. So I think that would be. It's better than the alternative, what I used to tell my mom. And one of the things that really caught my eye, and it has to do with my mom. Luckily, she had four sons, three who lived in the area prior to her passing. And the loneliness and isolation, I think, is incredibly impactful. So thank you for all you do there. I think that is a wonderful way to get people out and create new friendships and rekindle old friendships. So thank you. And lastly, I've been, I've been at the Rio Rico Community Center when you've delivered on Fridays. And I've called bingo a few times, and that's a rough crowd when you're calling bingo, so be careful. But thank you for all that you do for our community. You are appreciated.
I too want to personally thank the board, because all the work you do is behind the scenes. And it's good to see every time, like Double D mentioned, the culture, the inviting culture. When you come in there, people welcome you, and that has a lot to do with you all. And we thank you for your continued success, and we'll contact our senators and mention to be on that Old American Act. And invite us all, please.
You're always welcome.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you again.
The Board of Directors wants to express our heartfelt gratitude to Fernando Silvas for his unwavering professionalism and support throughout our grant period. He went above and beyond engaging with multiple partners to address our needs and challenges. It is essential to recognize those who work behind the scenes as they are crucial to our success. I also want to acknowledge Alejandra Ceballos and Emmanuel Suniga for their valuable contributions to our initiative in health, nutrition, and computer literacy. We are fortunate to collaborate with partners who truly understand and support our aging population, making a meaningful difference together. Fernando, are you here? Will you please stand up? I, as.
Go ahead and come up, please.
That's okay. That's all right. I just want the board to know that I have dealt throughout my educational and administrative career with a lot of administrators. Administrators like Mr. Fanny and Mr. Molera. Luis Carlos never reached that part yet, but I want you to know, this gentleman is a very honest, sincere, straightforward administrator who doesn't dodge hard issues, who deals, everything has to be done with data, effective data, proven data. And he doesn't waver from that stance. He holds on to that stance, and he doesn't waver. We're so glad to have worked with him, because at least you know where he stands. And we know how to monitor and adjust. And we're very grateful to you, Fernando, for everything you've done for the center, because you've made a big difference, and we appreciate very much your personal skill set and your empathy toward the aging population that we deal with. Thank you very much on behalf of the board.
Dr. Barona?
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the board, stay up, stay up here, sir. Fernando? On behalf of the board, we have these challenge coins, and we want the board and Fernando to take one of these. And we thank you for what you do, and we challenge you to continue working as hard as you are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I also like to mention Mrs. Corey here, Cecilia Corey. She's a volunteer on our Board of Directors also. She's very active with the board. And I also like to just finally tell you, Alejandra Ceballos did a wonderful job. She went down to the various food centers and made bags to distribute to all of the seniors who just enjoyed, you know, the fresh fruits and vegetables that they received like that. It's very meaningful, because a lot of these people don't have very much at home, especially for the cooking. And I also want to mention to you Emmanuel Suniga. He showed up one day, and I didn't know what he was doing there. I said, this is the guy of IT for the county. What's he doing here? Well, he made a presentation to the seniors on how to work their telephones, their cell phones. And he did a wonderful job. He just brought in all of that group. Being so young, I didn't think he was going to be able to do it, but he did a wonderful job, that kid. And I asked him afterwards, Emmanuel, your communications with this group, where did you learn that? From my mother, from my grandmother, dealing with my grandmother all the time. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity. And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, we would like to be excused now.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Phantom recorder, you're late. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item C, call to the public. Our first speaker is Marcela Chavez. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Marcela Chavez. I reside at thirty-sixty-one North Sunrise Place. Good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone, supervisors, directors. I'm here to announce the closure of United Way. As you know, United Way has been in our community for over forty years. We've been doing a really big fundraiser, which has been very popular with the golf tournament for thirty-six years. And I just want to let you know that we will continue with the golf tournament. But we are moving on to other things. We are going to be formally opening up our diaper bank. Our diaper bank has been around for quite a few years, and we're just going to make it the formal diaper bank. And it's going to be called the Santa Cruz County Diaper Bank. But I'm more than anything here to thank the county for allowing us to do our campaign for almost forty years. The support from you and your employees. We are truly grateful. We do plan on continuing working with the community. It's been a pleasure working with United Way. I did it for fourteen years. I think I was the longest-running director here. And I'm just, I'm kind of excited as well that we're going to continue with the community and that we're not completely closing, because we're not completely closing. So thank you once again for allowing me to be here, and have a good day, everybody.
Thank you, Marcela. Thank you for what you do for the community. We really appreciate it. Xander Alt? I expect an invitation.
Invitation given. Members of the board, thanks for having me today. My name is Xander Alt, and I live at sixty-two Red Rock Drive in Patagonia, Arizona. I'm excited to be here today, one, because I've never spoken in front of you guys before. But I had a call about ten days ago with County Emergency Services Director Sobira Castro. And this was a really unique phone call, because it was the first time that the small business in Patagonia that my wife Heidi and I represent, which is called the Spirit World One Hundred, it's Patagonia's gravel road cycling race event. We're in our seventh annual. It's been happening since two thousand nineteen. It was the first time that the event had been flagged at a leadership level. it's been a big piece of this part of Arizona for a long time. The state of Arizona right now is receiving annually around twenty-one billion dollars through the outdoor recreational economy. It's impacting our state in a really big way. When individuals are looking to travel or are looking for places to live, call home, or even decide where they should be for their careers, access to great, safe, family-oriented outdoor recreation and trails is something that is leading those decisions. On the visiting level, through tourism, with mountain biking and trail usership in mind, those visitors are spending an average of just over four hundred dollars per visit in those locations where those trails are drawing them for those visits. Since the inception in two thousand nineteen of the Spirit World One Hundred, the town of Patagonia, at that point, was experiencing around two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand annual tax-generated revenue. And in two thousand twenty-five, we have just broken one-point-three-million. That's a big deal. Cycling is not the sole provider of that. There are a number of reasons why that has happened. But, outdoor recreation in general, whether that's people birding, walking through the forest, hunting, camping, or riding a bike, they're visiting Santa Cruz County, they're visiting Patagonia in numbers that I don't think we've seen in the past, or have properly managed or kept track of.
Your time's up.
Oh.
But, we'd love to welcome you back in a form of a study session.
Okay.
To really have some pictures, really talk about your race. And we'd, we'd, we'd love to.
That'd be great. I would love that.
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely.
As, with regard to your invite, the Spirit World One Hundred is happening October twenty-third to the twenty-sixth, and I would love for you guys to join us.
Absolutely.
And see how the community from out of state is really enjoying your county.
I, I actually heard about this race, believe it or not, in Iowa, Dubuque, Iowa, at, at a cycling place, believe it or not.
Amazing.
Uh-huh.
Things are growing. We have a rider coming from Kenya this year.
That's awesome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good one.
We'll, we'll be in contact so we can have you here for a study session.
That sounds great.
Thank you. Okay. Anna Darian?
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, members of our, our board here. My name is Anna Darian. I serve as the Executive Director for Patagonia Area Resource Alliance, otherwise known as PATA. So, I want to very briefly talk about, you may want to start the timer, otherwise I'm going to keep going. I want to talk as quickly as I can about two things, the first of which being the Community Protection and Benefits Agreement. We see on the agenda that you'll be discussing this in executive session, which means that we will not be privy to hear what you're talking about. And that has been the trend with how this agreement has been negotiated and discussed. I understand this is a decision that's been made, that this is not going to be something that's going to be released to the public until it is potentially near completion. So, I just want to make a call today, and as always, for greater transparency, if not with the document just yet, but at least some assurance of what the process is going to be. And by a public process, it is not sufficient for this to be on an agenda on a Monday and then approved on a Wednesday. We need minimum sixty days to actually be able to review this document, an avenue to provide input that could be substantively changing this agreement, a chance for our team and others to, to actually look at this from a scientific perspective, because this is very important to us, particularly in Patagonia, where the protections are concerned. In the remainder of my time, I want to bring to attention the air quality permit that is now open for review. I'm again talking about the South Thirty-two Hermosa Mine Project. For context, this was a, a permit that was issued by the ADQ, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, that's a mouthful, ADQ. It was woefully insufficient, so we, in partnership with the Center for Biological Diversity and others, appealed this permit all the way to the EPA, the federal level. We cited over twenty violations of the Clean Air Act. A subset of those, I think five specifically, were taken up by the EPA, and so the permit had to go back to ADQ for revision, and that is currently out for public comment. The public comment period closes September twenty-fifth. There is a public hearing on the twenty-fifth in Patagonia at the high school there at six PM. Our team has reviewed this permit. It is still incredibly insufficient. There is vagueness around a lot of the monitoring. There, we have specifics on all this. I won't take the time here, but if, we are drafting, actually, I have a sample comment letter people can review, as well as analysis of this permit. So, either email me personally at anna@patagonialiance.org, and that's Anna with two N's, or visit our website. It should be up later today. We're also going to be sending out a newsletter, so if you don't get that, all of this is at patagonialiance.org. We are trying to make this as transparent for people to be able to understand in plain language why this permit is, continues to be insufficient. And we are still evaluating the violations to the Clean Air, Clean Air Act that were not taken up by the EPA. That is still potentially a topic for conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you. Next is Susan Wetherington.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Dr. Susan Wetherington. I'm a conservation biologist, and I live at three-three-three Harshaw Creek Road in Patagonia, Arizona. I live in the direct impact of the mining activities for both surface water and aquifer impacts. For the last three years, I have been impacted with my well, which was drilled in two thousand nine. Until two thousand twenty-one, it was a great producing well. It's sixty-five feet of the creek. Is this me?
I don't think so.
I'll stand back. And I, and four and a half miles downstream of the mine. I have not had potable water in my house for over three years now. I have relied upon the Patagonia Fire Department to bring me water, but they can't guarantee it's potable. And so, the reason I'm here speaking with you guys is to discuss some of my ideas on what I think is critically important in the Community Protection and Benefits Plan that you will be signing with the mine. First, the community services. I'm not the only one that's going to be impacted by having clean water in their homes. I would like for free delivery of potable water throughout the time of impact. This is not new to the extraction industry. Fracking in southwestern Colorado, that's just as soon as there's a problem, free potable water is delivered. Also, I would like to have some way to address the impacts that doesn't depend upon going a, a legal route. My impacts are that increased iron in my well that now keeps it from being usable. At one time, there is increased lead. These are all things that the hydrogeologists and teams of people I'm working with think started, created by the mine activities. But, they're geologic, geochemical processes that result from the release of the water or disturbance of the aquifer. I also would like to have some way to compensate for all this effort. I have put in over twenty-five thousand dollars trying to address my water issues. And they're still not resolved. And lastly, I think it's time that the county think about giving us property values that are declining tax relief with our property taxes. With that said, those are the main elements of the plan that I wish you would consider in your executive direction. And, and I agree with Para that we need an ability to review and comment formally on this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you very much.
We'll discuss these.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come up on Call to the Public? Yes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Supervisors, I'm Robin Lucky, President of the Council of the Alliance. I was not planning to come up, but I, I want you to know that this Community Protections and Benefits Agreement is incredibly important, and we don't want window dressing. I would like nothing more to have more parks, more pickleball courts, more swimming pools in this community. But fundamentally, when we have situations like this in Patagonia, where, by the way, the town water reporting, it's, it's going down and down and down. Literally. Something is going wrong. We know we're in a climate. We know we're in an extreme climate, extreme, extreme drought, sixty years. But, when Pat Reiser gets on television and says, "Probably seven percent of that could be due to dewatering," you know, in the town of Patagonia, I don't know if that's actually true. It could be higher, a higher percentage of that. So, I don't believe that ninety-three percent of the problems that we're having in well decline in that part of the county, and, by the way, Patagonia lakes, is all due to drought. The fact is, Susan, Dr. Wetherington has been very self-determined, very self-determined in trying to handle this herself. She's allowed the mine to come in and monitor her, her well, and the results haven't been that great. They haven't. They have not met her needs. And that's when relationships fail, when needs are not met. Not only in our, you know, with our, our spouses, but with our governments and our corporations. We have to be conscious of meeting the needs of those that we want to engage with. So, I would say to you, I support my colleagues. I support Para. I support what Dr. Wetherington is doing. By the way, she's, um, she's one of the founders of the, um, the network. What is it? Hummingbird Network. We need people like Susan in our community, teaching our kids, working with community. So, please, let's find solutions and not window dress on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to Item D, Current Events. Supervisor Davis, good morning.
Good morning. This Monday, I started going to the Santa Cruz Provisional College to meet with students. I'm going to be doing that for Mondays in a row, from eleven to twelve-thirty. It's just a meet and greet. We had a good turnout. So, next Monday is going to be the, the, the second Monday that I go to the Provisional College. And after that, I'm going to find another place. I started at El Sarape. Now, I'm at the Provisional College. Then I'll pick somewhere else. So, I'm very happy to be interacting with, with the youth. Also, this week, I met with Senator Gavaldón. We talked about how to collaborate. There's some big projects that, that we know is going to take a long time, but we're willing to, to work together. We just started the conversation. It went good. We went to the council and agent after our meeting. Like I said, they had a celebration. Everybody had music and stuff, so it was, it was great. I also, yesterday, I started the, one of my few, uh, former students approached me, and she wanted to do an internship. She wants to study politics. So, yesterday was her first day. We're going to start doing this internship. I'm going to shape it. I don't know how it's going to work after that. I hope to have more students. Right now, we also have five students from Nogales High School doing community service with Shannon and I. Thank you, Shannon. Shannon's been working really, really hard with me. So, so, so that's, it's been going really good. So, we'll see how that goes with that internship. Yesterday was her first day. And I got a chance to go to the Santa Cruz County Fair. And I met a lot of students there as well, the Four H Club, with Norma Reese. Students were doing great stuff. I, I saw this student who did a, a knife. They were doing a lot of welding, how they were raising their animals, selling them. So, really, really, I was really impressed. I was able to take my kids to, to have fun. I got to interact with people. So, that's some of the stuff that, that I did during these two weeks.
Good job. Excellent job. Vice Chairman, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Been, been active as much as I can be the last couple of weeks. Was part of the Santa Cruz Reliability Project Meeting. I think it went very well in Tubac. For those of you who live in that area of the county, even if you don't live in that area, it's real important that you take part in what's happening with Unisource and so forth. If you need more information, I would assume it might be, Shannon, is that part of our communications? What's that newsletter? Wonderful. Had a chance with Deputy, Deputy County Manager Chris, to, Chris Young, to meet with some folks last week from Sonoyta Elgin area, and came up with some, some very good ideas, kind of in line with the CPBA, especially when it comes to emergency management. So, and some of the ideas that they have. Longtime resident, so that meeting went very well. Was part of the Tubac Citizens Council. Met on Monday with Dr. Megdal and Aliatapia. We had a wonderful discussion about Southern Arizona and the water concerns. Met yesterday with Dr. Chris Lim regarding air quality. Hopefully, we can get him in here in November or December to talk about the air quality and some of the things that the University of Arizona. Yesterday, took part in the Port Authority Meeting regarding the, the Deconsini Port and, and future plans, perhaps. Also met yesterday, once again, with Deputy County Manager Chris Young with Chicanos Por La Causa and Valley Assistant Services to help those. Had a wonderful meeting yesterday with Anna out at the airport. If you never had a chance to go out to the airport and, and have some good food, it's, it's real good food out there. So, thank you, Anna, for that. Think, I know she left, but I wanted to make sure to thank Marcela for the incredible work that she's put forward with the United, been part of the United Way now for about five years, perhaps. And she has done some amazing, amazing things for our community. And I look forward, you know, to the diaper bank, although it's no longer the United Way. We're going to continue to, you know, with our board action and making sure that the youth and the adults have what they need in, in the area of diapers. Also, bike event, I'm, I'm excited about that, Xander, and I'm glad you, you let us know that it's October twenty-third through twenty-sixth. I'll be helping out with the Nogales Bike Classic. You know, I have a truck, so I'll be, I'll be following the sixty-mile riders if anyone breaks down. So, if you need anything like that during that event, just give me a holler. Okay? And then lastly, last night, I, I do a little of announcing for sports at Rio Rico, and had an opportunity for a first. They had their first-ever girls' flag football game against Pueblo. Witnessed someone kick four field goals, which was pretty impressive, and our first-ever victory. So, congratulations to Rio Rico High School, Coach Duran, and the young ladies from Rio Rico High School. And from what I understand, Nogales High School Flag Football Team, I don't know about this year, but I know last year they did very well. So, congrats to all of our athletes in the county.
You're down two to one, buddy. Just kidding, just kidding. Thank you, sir. It, it's been a busy two weeks. I had the privilege and opportunity to try a little hybrid open house, thanks to the ideas that Dr. Davis has brought forth. We're gonna continue to, you know, with our board action and making sure that the youth and the adults have what they need in, in the area of diapers. Also, bike event, I'm, I'm excited about that, Xander, and I'm glad you, you let us know that it's October twenty-third through twenty-sixth. I'll be helping out with the Nogales Bike Classic, you know, I have a truck, so I'll be, I'll be following the sixty-mile riders if anyone breaks down. So if you need anything like that during that event, just give me a holler. Okay? And then lastly, last night, I, I do a little of announcing for sports at Río Rico and had an opportunity for a first. They had their first-ever girls' flag football game against Pueblo. Witnessed someone kick four field goals, which was pretty impressive, and our first-ever victory. So congratulations to Río Rico High School, Coach Duran, and the young ladies from Río Rico High School. And from what I understand, Nogales High School Flag Football Team, I don't know about this year, but I know last year they did very well. So congrats to all of our athletes in the county.
You're down two to one, buddy. Just kidding, just kidding. Thank you, sir. It, it's been a busy two weeks. I had the privilege and opportunity to try a little hybrid open house, thanks to the ideas that Dr. Davis has brought forth. I had breakfast with Bugs at Nichols Diner, and that turned out real nice. I want to thank staff. We did Government One-O-One, went around and spoke to people. It was, it's a nice event. Also, I, I want to thank and congratulate and commend School Superintendent, Ms. Maya Donnelly and Carrie for hosting the Santa Cruz County Fair judging. We really enjoyed it. Thank you for hosting, and it was a wonderful event. Beautiful projects, incredible projects. Also, I, I had the privilege of attending the Jesus Cordova Golf Fundraiser. Carlo Garcia and Wendy Reese do an exceptional job, and that money goes to our youth, to scholarships. They've done an amazing job with that. We also, we'll be traveling to Phoenix today to, we have small counties meeting, and then tomorrow morning, we have our Executive Board with all the supervisors. So we will be starting our, our season, where we start going to our monthly season, monthly meetings in Phoenix. Also, upcoming, we are going up to the Arizona Game and Fish, October first. Some of us are going up for some training because we plan on hosting a fishing event for the youth. Arizona Game and Fish, for years, used to come up and, and do an event for us, and they'd bring the rods, they'd teach the kids, and then after COVID, it kind of died out. So we, we want to bring it back. It, it's a little different now. Now, they train us, and we're gonna be doing the actual training of kids. And so, so, so we're excited, and that's October first, and, and that's all I have to report. We'll go ahead and move on to item two. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair member of the board, I have nothing to report in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash and Investments, Expenditures and Revenue Reports. Mr. Chavez, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of seventeen million eight hundred thirty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine, of which sixteen million four hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven is invested. The road fund has an overall balance of six million sixty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four, with an investment amount of five million eighty-six thousand one hundred and fifty. Flood Control District Fund, overall balance is two million three hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred and sixty, with an investment amount of three hundred six thousand five hundred and twenty-eight. Our jail district has an overall balance of six million three hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six, with an investment amount of four million three hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and four. We have a total for all funds, fifty-four million eight hundred twenty-two thousand sixty, with an investment amount of twenty-eight million three hundred eleven thousand two hundred and twenty-nine, for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of four million seven hundred seventy-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-eight.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other departments wishing to report? Donnelly, go ahead and...
Good morning, Chairman Moleira, Supervisors, County Management, Directors, Members of the Board. My name is Saida Bustamante, and I am the WIIO Local Workforce Board Director, and I am here to invite you all to our Job Fair, Job Fair and Community Expo coming up October fifteenth. It's gonna be held at the Nogales High School Gymnasium from nine to two, and it is a completely free event for employers and for job seekers to attend. It's a great opportunity for job seekers to go in and see what type of employment there is out there, to see what type of training opportunities there are. We have, there's gonna be free transportation for job seekers who don't have transportation to and from the event. The route will be from Primeria Alta, then to Walmart, and then to JCPenney, and to the event. And again, from the Job Fair to their place of, of pickup. Again, this is a completely free event to everybody. We have about seventy employers signed up, and in past years, we've had seven hundred job seekers attend this event, not only to look for employment, but also for community resources out there. And we have everything from restaurant, retail, financial institution, law enforcement, all branches from the military will be there. Of course, the schools, local government, Santa Cruz County, City of Nogales, produce and logistics. There will also be training institutions. If an employer has employment opportunities but are required to have any type of certification, any type of training, training institutions will be there to offer their type of, of training educational services. And we encourage the community to attend. This is a very unique event because it's not only a community resource, but it's employers and institutions all in the same place, and we're very excited to have these events. And for more information, everybody's able to go into our office. We're at six-ten North Morley Avenue, right across the Hotel Americana, or you guys are, you guys are more than welcome to visit our social medias where we continue to update our, our website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And inside a really quick side eye, Mr. Chavez, I just want to thank you guys for sending some of the staff from Arizona Work to go with me to the Provisional College this, this Monday. So thank you, thank both of you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Moleira, Supervisor Davis, Supervisor Fanning, County Management, Members of the Community. My name is Maya Donnelly, I'm the County School Superintendent. Just wanted to start off our update with a couple of thank yous. As you mentioned, we wrapped up the County Fair over the weekend. Wanted to thank all the judges. We had about twenty-five community members, elected officials, department heads who were judges, gave their time. It, it is not an easy process to, to judge the work, and so we thank you for that time. And then, of course, to our staff, Chantel Gallardo was our new fair coordinator, and so she managed the hall for the whole weekend, and so I, I believe it was a wonderful event. Despite the flood overnight Friday evening, it was a wonderful event. Also, want to thank the Treasures Office, Alejandro and Bettina. We were able to take our business managers meeting that we have with our office and the school district business managers on the road yesterday. We had a field trip, got to visit and learn about the Treasures Office, and then they hosted our meeting here. So I think it was a wonderful opportunity for our collaboration. So a couple of things going on. I'm sure you have heard in the news lately about federal grants, again, being cut. And so Gear Up is our amazing grant that we've had. It is our third cycle of Gear Up. The program ends September thirtieth of this year. We have put in for a no-cost extension to use our carryover funds. We've also applied for a new round. Have not heard anything as of yet. Last Friday, nine Gear Up programs were canceled in an email. And so we have yet to hear, I mean, we still, you know, we still have hope, but, you know, we, we just really don't know what to think. Carrie is part of a Gear Up Consortium with other directors, and so they're able to share information and support each other, but really, everybody is pretty much in the dark. So if you have the, the ability to communicate with our congressional leaders, let them know, advocate for, for Gear Up in Arizona, we would appreciate that. At any rate, Gear Up continues to work. Last week, they hosted a Career Crash Course, they called it, and keep in mind, they're working with the Class of Twenty-Twenty-Four. So these students are in their second year of post-secondary, providing supports for them, and so they had, I think it was about eight kids in, in our building, building resumes and preparing for job interviews. These are students that are here in the community looking to join the workforce. We're also planning the Fifth Annual Thrive Fest. This is a student and family-centered resource fair. We have it on the Pearson Field. It's Saturday, September twenty-seventh. All are invited to, to join, to put up a booth. We encourage engaging activities for families and kids. We've had a dunk tank, a mechanical bull, performances by cheer and dance teams. Carrie's got almost thirty organizations signed up so far. So if you haven't yet, please sign up, and then community, you're welcome to join. It's a, it's a really fun event for families.
What's the date on that again?
That is September twenty-seventh, Saturday morning, ten to twelve.
I think it's, who's just volunteered for the dunk tank?
Nice. That'll be the longest line. Next to the mechanical bull. Just kidding, Miss.
Just kidding.
Now I better get up there, too. We also had the opportunity to open up our AI Center. I think everybody's heard about our Kapoor Parada AI Center, but the exciting news is, is that our staff has now developed training sessions. We were trained by Mr. Kapoor, and now Terry Sprig and Carrie Munoz are developing. It was a train-the-trainer situation, so now they're developing trainings for the public. And our trainings are gonna be really focused on using AI and, you know, to, for educators, mainly. How to use the prompts, how, how to work smarter, not harder. We're not, you know, I mean, teachers are weary about AI, right? I mean, it's, it's a little bit threatening, but what we're using it for is basically to enhance the teacher's creativity and, you know, basically, it's a time saver, and it's, it's, you know, something that I think educators will find useful. The trainings that are being developed are a beginner's course, it's an hour. We've already had a couple of requests from different community organizations. We want to know about AI, can you train us a little bit? And so we're developing a beginner's training, and then a training for educators that is about a three-hour training, and it's mainly for prompting, for how to use the software for prompting. And so, once that's developed, Carrie is managing a focus group of educators at all grade levels to get feedback, and then we'll launch those training sessions. Also, lastly, Fifth Annual, October is Arts Month, right around the corner, and we have a couple of really exciting partnerships. I don't know if you remember with, with the ARPA loans a few years back, arts organizations and nonprofits were able to give back to the community in a way and have their loan forgiven, and in that, that opportunity, the Morley Arts District was developed. Paula Shaper created a really cool website for the Morley Arts District. They had a calendar going, but since the website has, well, kind of gone dormant a little bit. And so in collaboration for Arts Month this, this year, our office is going to bring that event's calendar back to life on the website, and hopefully encourage some of the arts organizations to kind of put their, put their events and activities back up there, and then continue with an arts events calendar throughout the year. That's gonna be our office's contribution to the Morley Arts District. Also, it's been five years since we do a summer mural, and the chamber has always asked, don't you have a map of those murals? We get people that come into the chamber asking, wanting to take either a tour or a walk to see the murals in the community. And so we are gonna develop that map with students and the muralists that will be able to launch by the end of October, and the chamber will be able to use for the public that comes in and wants to see those beautiful works of art. More to come on October Arts Month. We'll also have our Art Ambassador Awards, of course, and then some pretty exciting activities through our Young Audiences Raise Program. So that is about it. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll put in some calls to our congressional, definitely. Okay. Any other departments wishing to report? No? Okay. Awards and recognitions, do we have any? Okay. We'll go ahead and save the executive session to the end. At this time, we'll go to item H, one, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Community Benefits Support Policy, Río Rico Landfill, Sonoyta Landfill and Tubac Transfer Station Granting Fee, Landfill Disposal Privileges to, to eligible community-based organizations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, effective ten-one, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, Yes, sir.
I just want to comment on this just a little bit for clarity. So this was designed, as you guys have been working through, through this, these past nine months, as much transparency as possible. And so I just want to read the purpose of this policy, that's actually on the documents that are in the agenda. And it says, "The Santa Cruz County wants to partner with residents who want to reduce waste to our landfills and/or combat litter issues in Santa Cruz County. To support these initiatives in maintaining a clean and healthy environment, the county will allow free landfill dumping privileges to eligible Santa Cruz-based organizations of groups for fiscal year twenty-six, October first through June thirtieth." And it go, the document goes through and explains the criteria and everything, and really, what we want, we want to support the residents that are recycling, the residents that help with litter, those types of things, so that when they do this beneficial act for the community, we, we don't charge them when they go dump, dump what they do. And, and that's really the initiative behind this. We know that there's residents that are already doing this. We just want to make it formal so that we can recognize these people, and, and we, it gives us a good database of what's going on with the county also. So that's really the motive behind this document.
Thank you. I know we've partnered with Santa Cruz Shining and other organizations, and I know Shannon's done a great job with that, and thank you. This is, this is a good effort.
There is, I just want to add one more thing. Since this is the first time that we've done this document, that's why we're ending it at the end of the fiscal year, because the landfill is the enterprise fund, so it has to be, you know, sustainable, so we can, we have to moderate how much is actually free and, and whatnot. So that's why it ends on June thirtieth.
Questions?
After June thirtieth, will we be able to re-up if, if we find that it's been beneficial?
We'll, we'll look at, before June thirtieth, we'll, we'll review at the numbers, and we'll, we'll review the numbers, and I'll speak with County Management and you three to see what the best move is going forward. But we'll, probably around May, we'll take a look at the numbers and see where we're at. And like I said, it's a balance between helping the community and maintaining that enterprise fund sustainable.
Wonderful.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item two, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve the Rescheduling of October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five Regular Meeting from the morning to the evening at five-thirty PM.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, meeting, a couple months back, maybe three, four months back, the board discussed having meetings in the afternoon. So this is an opportunity to schedule another meeting at, in the afternoon, and it's October fifteenth. We do have a couple of presentations and a hearing, I think, scheduled for that day.
Perfect. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to recess general session and move into Jail District.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We are now in the Jail District. Item one, Discussion, Possible Action to Authorization to Fill Vacant, A, Detention Sergeant Position, and B, Detention Corporal Position. Yes, sir, Mr. Chavez.
Mr. Chairman, just to inform the board that they are budgeted positions.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. There you go, sir. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn Jail District and move into general session.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item J, consent agenda. Through seventeen. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll go ahead and move back to item F. One, pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four-three-one point zero-three, A, three and four, discussion and consultation for legal advice and/or direction regarding South Thirty-two or Mosse Project Community Protect, Protection and Benefit Agreement. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I move to enter into executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions, discussion?
Something really quick. So we know that a lot of community members have questions when it comes to the CBPA. I just wanted to ask Deputy Kennedy Manager if he has any information to provide, since any updates, anything that you could provide to us.
Chairman Morello, Supervisor Fanning, Supervisor Davis, thank you for this opportunity to speak towards this. And first, I want to mention that I appreciate people coming and explaining their view on, and recommendations more than anything else. And I want to emphasize the fact that we do want public feedback for this. I understand that through this process, as agreed upon at the beginning, how it's going to be handled. But what I can tell you is that we are close. We're close to being able to open up the CBPA for public comment. We aren't making decisions before we get, before we, we show it to the public and let, let people look at it. And so it's, it's an exciting time. We're excited to hear what people think of it. And so I can't give you a specific date as to when we're going to be able to open up to the public, but I can tell you that we are going to open up to the public soon and that there will be a time for public feedback. And that feedback is very important for when the signatories are making their decisions. And then when it, one thing, a couple of things I wanted to mention about the CPBA. First of all, you know, protections is a huge part of it and also is the benefits. And, and as you guys have mentioned to me multiple times, we really want to make sure that when it comes to the benefits, we're improving the quality of life for everybody in the county. And that's, that's our focus with what we're doing.
Protections, correct?
Oh, yes, definitely. The protections, and yeah, I'm sorry, I may, I may have not said that correctly. But we have the protections in both sides, the protections and the benefits. Our focus on improving the quality of life for everybody in the county. We want people to live with dignity here in the county. Another thing that I want to mention is, this is a wonderful opportunity for our county in the sense that we have the city of Nogales, the town of Patagonia, and ourselves working together to serve our public. And so it's, this could really be a huge, and it's a, it's a continuous document. So it's, it's something that's going to bring the county together and allow us to serve the pub, the public, the three entities together. So it's a wonderful opportunity for the, for the community and for us.
And Mr. Young, I know, I believe you mentioned that there will be plenty of time for us to have the dialogue and discussions with the community before we make a decision.
Yes, yes, there will be time for public feedback for the, there'll be a good amount of time for public feedback, once we are able to show the draft that we have.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
And I think it's important that, when that occurs, just like the, the folks said today at the call to the public, that the, the public is given ample time to, to look it over. And, and that's what I'm going to push for as, as part of the CPBA, to look it over and give us some feedback. So thank you.
You'll be hosting cafecitos in District Three, right?
You bet.
I just want to say something quick, just to end this. Mr. Young, can you please do me a favor and take a look at the situation of the person who spoke with, with her, communicate the message?
Doctor Wetherington?
Doctor Wetherington.
Wetherington. Yes, of course. And that's the type of feedback that we're looking for. You know, specific examples, how people are affected, things like that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Good, good idea, absolutely, thank you. Okay, any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're now in executive session.
All right, we're back. At this time I'd like to entertain motion to adjourn executive session and move into general session.
To move?
Second.
For motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries unanimously. I believe that is all the people's business. All we have is item K. Adjournment. Gentlemen?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. We are now adjourned. All right. Good meeting.